It is, what is it? It is August 28th, 2025. Like to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Travis. Okay, do we have any announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to comments, suggestions, petitions by residents, taxpayers, and visitors in attendance regarding items that are not on the agenda. Please be advised, all comments, public comment, has a five-minute limit. Okay, seeing none, reports and presentations, none listed here. We will move on to new business. A is motion to award the bid for the Gay Street closure.
Good evening. Sean Metrick, Borough Manager. I'd like to begin by thanking Borough Council for addressing the urgency to get projects done, this project started, a little bit sooner. Coming in here on a day when you weren't previously scheduled for a special meeting. Many people don't know this, but our Borough Council persons have jobs or had jobs. They have other, other things that occupy their day. You're all here on a volunteer basis, so I appreciate the extra time it took to get here tonight for, for the special meeting. So what we're here tonight to do is to consider the results of a bid. This is the third time, perhaps third time's a charm, for the Gay Street closure infrastructure. Those are a series of movable bollards that can more easily close Gay Street, provide a higher level of safety, that will look their best. And we also had some project, also had some project enhancements with signs and accessibility improvements that were considered in this bid. This evening, we have in the room, I know the Chief of Police would like to say something. John O'Brien, the Director of the Bid, has some comments. We have Kelly Goff from Remington and Vernick, who manages the project from the engineering team, the design engineering team, can answer any questions about the bid that are specific. Don Edwards is in the room. He is Project Manager, can, can talk about logistics and give you advice on Gay Street. And Will Williams is in the room, who can give you any questions, answers you have on grants that are in play for this project. So we looked at, at the evidence and, and the results, and we thought it would be easiest to kind of boil us down to two choices for us to consider tonight. Option A would be to award the base bid, and the way we constructed this bid was the base bid would be just the bookend closure of Darlington and Matlack. In other words, to provide the higher crash-rated bollards at the ends of our streets, at, at the ends of the open air market, plus alternate five. What's alternate five? Alternate five are a series of fixed bollards in those locations specified in the bid that would, are placed outside of the roadway to prevent cars who might have ill intent, who would evade the structures in the street, maybe go up on the sidewalk to get around them. These are important design consideration that we talked about with the police. So that would be the base bid. And for your reference, that is only about half of what we originally spoke for this project when we were talking about the estimate last year in October. Option B, because I'd like to boil it down to two choices for you all, would be to do the original scope of our project that we envisioned, more or less around this time last year, which would be the bookends of the Gay Street Open Air Market, in addition to both sides, east and west of High Street. So there would be four locations where we would install these bollards, as well as alternates five and six, which are the additional fixed bollards in specified locations to prevent what I just mentioned at those two locations. So flipping over my summary, you can see that our original budget, our budget for this project going into this process was $975,000 to do option B. What we have found out now, third time bidding this, that the price is somewhere between 1.4 and 1.7 million dollars to do that original project. We have a Chester County Department of Community Development Grant that has already been awarded for Phase One in the amount of 677,000 and change. And going into the budget season last year, we allocated remaining, the remaining sum of American Rescue Plan Act dollars to this project, that we estimated would be 262,000, leaving about $35,000 free and clear in the general fund to make this project work. Pretty good deal, right? $35,000 of general fund money to do a $975,000 project. But we learned it's a lot more expensive than we had originally thought, maybe even twice as expensive, looking at the math. What we also learned, if you take a look closely at the ARP allocation, it went up. It went up because we had, when we made that estimate in our budget last year of 262, we still had some other projects that needed to close out and get paid out. And after we closed and paid those out, we discovered that there was a little more money to be allocated there. So that's why that number goes up about $60,000 to 328,000. So that 328 has to be deployed to this project and has to be spent before the end of 2026. And you can see under options A and B, there is roughly $36,000 in general fund to make this, make half of the original scope project work, and $837,000 to do the whole original scope of the project. As you are aware, we also got awarded a grant through the same program. We got about half of the dollars we asked for, for Phase Two of the Gay Street Open Air Market closure, which would be closure infrastructure at Church and Walnut Streets. So once we had opened these, this bid, and Kelly tabulated it for us, we reached out to DCD. DCD, I did it, I'd made the mistake. It's DCD, no E in there. And we asked them, can we, can we apply Phase One and Two grant awards to basically what amounts to our Phase One scope of work? So we don't have an answer for you as of right now, tonight, but we're working hard to get an answer for you on that before next week, end of next week, hopefully. If we were able to apply that Phase Two grant to essentially Phase One work, that would reduce the net cost to the general fund to about $412,000. So we weighed all this on a scale. We, we talked it over today. We talked to the solicitor. And staffs, our staffs is in agreement to recommend awarding Option B to Borough Council. We think this gets more of the project done quicker and sooner. Things are only going to get more expensive with time. I think, I will leave the public safety comments to, to Josh. We'll leave the downtown revitalization and, and economic comments to John O'Brien. But there are, there's good arguments to be made to do more now than later. That will come at a cost, additional cost that we have not budgeted for. And Barb is here to answer any questions and concerns you have about that. So at this, this point, it's, if there's no questions from Council on what I've said so far, I'd like to maybe invite John or Josh to, to say something next.
Sure. Good evening, Council. John O'Brien, Executive Director of the Westchester Bid. Sean asked me to come tonight to kind of outline, you know, how the reception of the market is amongst the businesses. For one, we are in favor of continuing the weekend procedure going into the future. I think that's a good balance for those who might have a takeout business or in the retail sector who might not be as favorable. Restaurants continues to be strongly favorable. For the retail, it's probably a mix about 50/50. I did prepare this report for you. You can follow up with me in future if there's other questions. But basically, this is an outline of how many people are coming into the market. And the way I'm able to determine that, we have a new system called Placer AI, which allows us to geo-fence a building or a particular area, and understand through cellphone data how many people are moving in and out of that area. So I filtered this for the Gay Street Open Air Market. You can see that on page two, that's the footprint. Page three outlines the number of visitors. The first column, blue, 480,000.5. That is the 2025 number up to this past weekend. The 2024 number is in the middle, that's 393,000. And then the last column is the 2023 number at 374,000. So we are seeing a gradual increase in the number of folks that are coming out to this space. There are other demographic things that you can look at, the visitor trend over the various weekends, what the median income, what the ethnicity and background and household makeup is of the folks coming. On page nine, there's an outline here of where the folks are coming from. So red being the higher percentage, blue being the lower. As you can see, it is fairly hyperlocal, meaning there's a lot of residents who are coming into the borough, but it does attract from a very large swath of southeastern Pennsylvania. Our thought, you know, if it's amenable council and it works out budgetarily, would be to do Option B. As Sean said, things are only going to continue to get more expensive. There is a fiscal path to doing that. We believe that's the best approach. Obviously, that's at Council's discretion to evaluate. We're not, obviously know your budget as well as you do, but that would be our recommendation. I don't know if Council had any questions for me about business impacts or anything like that.
Counsel?
Thank you. I'm always available for call, email, if there's any follow-up questions. Thanks.
Okay. Chief?
Hi, thanks, Josh Lee. I'm the Police Chief. And just as, by way of background, obviously, the, the open air market's been a thing for several years now, and Council's put a lot of work into, into that, along with, with Mr. O'Brien, and, you know, really everybody in the police departments. We've pivoted in the way that we patrol up there to try to adjust to, you know, to the current times. And we can go back several years. It's always been my concern that there's a vulnerability up there now, that we are inviting bad things to happen with that open air market. And I'm so happy that we're here at this point to try to close those holes and fix it, so that it can, so that it can go on in the safest manner possible. And I know that Council has a very difficult decision to make tonight. Please know that members of my team and I have worked with Mr. Metrick, reviewing the plans and the options, looking at barrier types. Obviously, the, the engineers provided a lot of data and done a lot of work. And Mr. Metrick tonight gave you three options, I'm sorry, two options, but really, I think there's three. And one's to do nothing, right? And I think doing nothing is not a good choice. Option A, that Mr. Metrick showed you, is doing something, but it's leaving a lot of vulnerabilities there. And it's not, it's not closing all those holes, and it's not going to make it the, the safest space possible. I don't think it's anywhere near that. And then there's Option B. And I'm not a numbers guy. To be honest with you, in the nicest way possible, I don't care what it costs. Option B is the safest option that is out there. Option B allows for the, the highest likelihood of, of safety. And I'd ask Council that if you're going to seriously consider making this a permanent thing, now's the time. I'm told that prices aren't going to go down. Just turn on the news to see terrible things that happen in other parts of the world. I think, I think now's the time to act. If you're going to act, Option B, I think is your choice.
Thank you. Kelly?
Hi, Council. This is Kelly Goff from Remington and Vernick, for the record. So I was in charge of opening the bids on Tuesday, and we all worked pretty quickly to review the bids with staff, and we received four bids. And the three of the, three of the bidders actually didn't submit all of the required documentation. And after consulting with Ms. Camp, the borough solicitor, she said that there are rules, and all the bidders needed to submit all those documents in time. And three of them didn't, and one of them did, and that, the name of that company is Marino Corporation. And I do have good references for them. They're a good contractor. And also, after my review, they are, they are also compliant with your RCO.
Thank you. Barb?
I just wanted to report that if Council does go with Option B, that we do have cash sitting in our general fund plaid account, which is relatively liquid. And we can get that money without incurring any costs or any losses on sales.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards, any comment?
Just one thing, as far as the process. This, when we put this out for a third time, we introduced competition. So it involved the matador bollard, as well as some other options. We also structured the bid so that the base bid would be about a million dollars, so that we, we knew we would not have to go out a fourth time. And happy to say that the base bid for the responsive bidder is about $900,000. So I think that part of the story is, is a good news story.
Thank you. I have one question for you. If you had to guess on a weekly basis, you've got to deploy public work staff to, you know, set up, dismount, et cetera, any idea what that costs?
Well, it's going to be a reduction in cost, because the time that, that we have to spend now, putting out those big, heavy bricks and, or blocks of concrete and everything, we're not going to have to do as much. So it's going to be a reduction in cost with, with this project, which is, you know, which I also think is a good thing.
Thank you. Any public comment?
Daryl Cook, 506 South Horn Street. I'm curious, have we considered a table tax for those that use the Gay Street area to compensate the taxpayers that don't? Also, I'm really curious, with Option A, what is the weekly cost? And how long would it take to equal the $412,000? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not aware that any, anything was done relative to table tax. Never heard of.
Hi, just to, oh, Lisa Kearns, 312 West Fiddle Street. Just two areas, I'm, so just do I understand this? The final budget for the borough, we budgeted 35K, and the final cost is going to be 412K. Am I reading that right? Okay, so, so that's the change. Okay, so we budgeted 975, and we're going to be paying, if we went with B, 1,844?
It's a little more complex. Like, we budgeted, we thought the project was going to cost 975,000. And we thought that we were, I mean, I guess to your question, we thought we were going to get money for almost all of that, except for the 36,000. So of our general fund, we were only gonna, if now that we've gotten, so apples to apples, Option B is actually going to cost, instead of 975, which is the apples to apples, it's going to cost 1.8 million. And we get a little bit more money from a couple of things, potentially some more DCD money, but it could cost us somewhere between 400,000 to 800,000, depending on that, that kind of line in the middle there, that we'll know more about next week.
Gotcha. So the budgeted and the Option B is, is like twice, Option B is like twice as much as you budgeted. Okay. Okay.
And out of our fund could be 400,000 or 800,000 more than our?
Right, which is like 12 times more than you. The, the second area that had a question about is, of the four bids, three of them got thrown out because they missed the same form. Is there something about, is it a strange form that they have to fill out? Is it a hard to reach? I mean, we're not considering three of the four, and there's $200,000 between the low bidder and the high bidder. And three of them, we tossed, some might say for a technicality. It might be a very valid technicality, but is there something weird about that form?
I wouldn't call it weird, but this is a design build project. So there's latitude as to what they can propose. And so the bid documents required that they identify what they would use. The matador bollard, which is what we've, we're working with all along, which is what Marino proposed. But we also gave them other options. So it's, it's a different type of bid, only because it's design build. But there's, you know, they just weren't paying attention.
I can also add, so the borough often uses a platform called PennBid. Now it's changed to Bonfire, and then I think it just got balled out a second time. Anyways, long story short, it's an online bidding platform. And there is a folder that says Required Bid Submission Documents in that form, as well as the Chester County, which was the funding agency, as well as their documentation was also in that, that folder. So it's pretty clear what forms are required to be submitted.
The information that they didn't include was the, the materials that they were going to use? Or what's the information?
Two, two sets of information they excluded, one of them being the product that they were going to specify, and the second one being several forms that the funding agency, Chester County, requires during bidding.
Thank you. Kelly, since you're here, I have a question for you. In the, the base bid, there's an item four that says construction allowance for 100,000, if and where directed. And then at alternate eight is the ADA ramps, which also says if and where directed. Are they related to one another?
No, they are unrelated. So PennDOT often specifies a 10% contingency allowance. So we model our specifications off of PennDOT specifications.
Okay, so the 100,000 is literally just a?
For unforeseen conditions. Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Can I, can I ask a, can I ask a design question, just to make sure I understand? When I, when I read the alternates, there's the base bid that says barriers at Matlack and Darlington. And then there's the alternates, like five and six, that say fixed bollards.
Yes.
What, what is the difference?
So the barriers are the barriers that will be in the roadway. The fixed bollards are the ones, and Sean briefly went over this, that will basically be on the sidewalk in order to prevent a car that just goes on the sidewalk.
So wait, are the, are the sliding ones?
Yes, that'll be within the roadway.
So, so there would not be any barriers, okay, barriers at High, and then fixed, so no fixed bollard, or no barriers at Matlack and Darlington?
On the sidewalk.
Okay, on the sidewalk. That, that's the base bid, just on the sidewalk?
The, the base bid is the sliding bollards in the roadway.
Okay, base bid is the barrier sliding on Matlack and Darlington only. Okay. Then alternate five is fixed bollards at Darlington only, which is just on the side, on the?
That's correct.
Okay, sidewalk. Okay. And then barriers at High would be the sliding one on both sides of High?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then fixed bollards at High would be sidewalk on, on High?
That's correct.
Okay. And so the, the only thing would be that Matlack, for some reason, we're not putting anything on the sidewalk?
Yeah, there's, there's one bollard proposed, that Matlack, one fixed bollard. That was included in the base bid.
In the base bid, okay. Plus, okay, thank you. Thanks for clearing that up for me.
Council, any other questions? I have two. One, have all the at alternates been designed already? I mean, the bid docs are ready to, to go, we're ready to get to construction, or is there further work that has to be done relative to any of the alternates?
There, there's design build components of the entire project.
Gotcha. And then second, if we don't know tonight, obviously, we don't know about the DCD question, so we can award now, do we award now everything except that option? What, what do we do tonight if we don't know the answer?
If you have concerns about what the county will advise us on about those two bids, Council could amend the motion contingent upon application of Phase One and Two bid awards to Option B.
Okay.
Other question for Kelly. What, what's, what's a Church Street? I don't see anything in the description, so apologies if it was deeper into the information, but?
There's nothing included at Church Street in this bid package, Church or Walnut.
What would be the plan for those two streets if we go forward with this?
That's Phase Two. Essentially, we would do closure, and we've been thinking about some less crash-resistant closure infrastructure there that might be a little bit cheaper, actually. We haven't vetted all that out, but at Church and Walnut, we put closure infrastructure there in Phase Two, and also fill in the signs and ADA ramps that we intended to do all along with the design. That could go into Phase Two. And the, the thinking is that when we're done with Phase Two, the plan that we worked on and developed in 2022 would be completely installed.
So did 975 originally include Church and Walnut? No, okay.
And just one, when I said that there would be less work for Public Works after this is built, there will still be some work. So for like Church and Walnut, we would still have to put out temporary barricades when it's time to close off the area, until the next phase is approved and constructed. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
When, when you went through the system, and the matador blockade, blockade was selected, did anyone check to see availability in the United States of that product, since we were told it was manufactured in Europe? So what I'm saying is, are we going to have to wait six, eight, 10 months for the materials? Has anyone looked into that at all?
There is a long lead time on these materials, over 20 weeks at this time.
Right, long lead time. The, are you, what does that mean? Do we, do we mean we won't get the materials until January? Or we won't get the materials until February? Yeah?
That's correct. So at this point, the lead time on the materials, they would come in around January, February.
And does it have to come from Europe, or do they have a local distributor?
I believe it would be coming from Europe. I'm not aware of a manufacturer in the US.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions?
Sorry, just real quick, on that, as far as an impact, avoiding implementing during the holiday season is probably best for the town as a whole and for our retail community. So that probably the lead time would be, would have sent a better timeframe for when the best implementation could be, from at least the small business perspective.
To that point, Mr. O'Brien, I don't believe, we, we plan on starting till after January 2026 and having it ready for May, hopefully.
Okay.
Sean, I guess a question to you now is, if we can't get the material in time to, to do everything that we're supposed to do, will the grantor give us a lead time since we've started the project? Say we can't get the materials until April, and we're supposed to spend the money by June, I think.
The grantor asks for periodic updates, and I think it's best to show progress. I think awarding a bid, showing progress, knowing that there's a lead time, things are coming in. And I, I actually liked the idea of starting in January. It was something that we talked about with the bid. I went to some bid meetings this summer. That would be an ideal start time, and it would give us enough time to complete the project if we get shovels in the ground, so to speak, around that time. Your concern is, will the grantor balk? Be patient or balk at the?
Even though we're moving forward, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think as long as we keep them in? Yeah, I think, I think as long as we keep them informed, and Will, if I, if I'm missing anything that you will fill in, I got a thumbs up. I think we're okay, because they've been asking for quarterly reports from us all along. We've been telling them, well, we tried once, we didn't, we didn't award it. We tried a second time, we didn't award it. And the bid is still there for us to deploy and use. What I will say about bid awards, having, prior to getting into municipal management, been on a county side evaluating bids, one thing the grantors like to see are people who do projects. So they like, they like you to use the money. So the fact that we've been slow to get this one started may have, may have played a role in us getting less than we asked for for phase two. I'm only speculating. But it's important to use the money that you're awarded in a timely fashion.
Mr. Metric, I had one other question. Mr. Flynn, what about the ARPA grants? Do those funds have to be used by a certain time?
Correct.
And would the, would the same thing apply for the ARPA? Would we be given the same?
We need to spend it by 2020, the end of 2026, and it needs to have been allocated by the end of 2024, which we did in our budget last year. We said whatever was remaining would go towards this particular project.
Okay, thank you.
That was in our capital budget for this year.
I also heard you mention that the DC, the DCD grant, you know, you're following up on that 425,000.
Correct.
Do we have like an ETA? Is it going to be this week? Is it going to be next month? Is it, do we have an idea?
We're going to have a conversation, the person who can make the decision is on vacation this week. So when they get back, we'll, we'll find time next week. It's a priority of mine. We'll just make, we'll just see if we can get it on their priorities to talk sooner than later.
Okay, thank you.
But that grantor DCD phase two is for our project phase one, correct? It's not something that like we have to wait for, for like Church and Walnut Street?
No, the application we submitted was for phase two. So we got to go to the grantor and say, this, this is how things have played out. We thought it was going to be this. It's a lot of money. Can we use the money? We thought we were going to apply to a future phase, to the phase we want to do now to get us to that future phase.
Okay, okay, so then there will be a phase three, my boss at work hates using phases because you never know which like thing you're referring to. So there might be a phase three grant ask for the phase two project.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, to confuse it more, yeah. We're going to, we're going to try and go out and find more money to complete the project. We're going to put our heads together and find out suitable grant programs to apply to for this, so that when we're back in this room around this time next year, we have some good bids to show you for the completion of this infrastructure, and we're constructing again in the winter cycle next year.
So I think, counsel, we have to talk about whether if this option B contingent on getting the 425,000 applied to this, or are we, okay, we're spending the additional, you know, getting up to 837, and personally, I feel like we should, we should do it now. I mean, I'd love to be able to get the grant, but again, things aren't getting less expensive. We've heard from, from other folks about the safety, et cetera. So people want to weigh in on that?
Yes, Mr. McCoy, and I just want to point out that at the beginning of this year, the tariff on steel was zero. When this project went out to bid, I believe roughly in the spring, it was up to 25%. Now it's at 50%, copper's at 50%. And you know, you're an engineer, and Kelly knows as well, that these projects are not getting any cheaper. And I'm in agreement that if we have the money in reserve, that we should make that investment now. To the chief's point, it is a public safety issue as well. You know, it was a total team effort here. I think everyone did a great job. Kelly included very thorough. And the contractor is a good contractor. For people who don't know, Marino, they're the ones that did South High Street. They did a very good job on South High Street. So I'm in agreement that we need to make that investment now because we do not know what uncertainty that one person can trigger cost increase that are going to affect all of us.
Further comments? Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. McCoy, I make a motion to award the bid for the Gay Street closure for phase one to Marino.
Which option?
Option B, sorry.
Second.
Hey, Mr. Metric, please call the question.
Sorry, just give me a second. I'm making notes here on who first and seconded. For the record, Sheila Vicaro is absent tonight. So Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Ms. Shimoney?
Yes.
And Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to the next item, which is under Other Business, Motion to Approve a Proposal by Urban Engineers to Perform a Review of the Westchester University Master Plan, Splitting the Costs Between West Ocean Township and Westchester Borough.
This was an item up for consideration, I think, at one of our committees this month, right? And I reached out to members of council, and I said, can we put this on tonight's special meeting agenda to handle it sooner and not wait till September, sort of get a head start on this process of the evaluating the Westchester University Conditional Use Application, which precedes, as requirement of our ordinance, precedes any plan development they have for housing or anything on property they own in the borough. West Ocean Township put out a request for proposals to a, what amounts to a neutral engineer, an engineering firm that neither of us work with. We wanted to find a good planner that could tackle this project, and what we got out of that proposal was not a lump sum proposal, but a rate sheet. And I understand there's a concern with, how far is this expense going to go? So what I might suggest to you all tonight is to put a cap on this of $20,000. Give me an opportunity as well to go to the university. There's been talk about whether they could cost share some of this with us, get an email from legal counsel from, on their side to see if that can happen. But that might be one way to quell concerns I have heard at the committee meeting and since over email to put a $20,000 cap on this. To be transparent here about how this is supposed to work, urban engineers, if you agree to this, would perform a review that would take the master plan as a whole, and without discriminating between whether it's a West Ocean issue or a Westchester Borough issue, review the plan, and those costs of that plan review would be split between the borough and West Ocean evenly. And then if urban engineers were to come to any of your meetings, your conditional use hearings, because I know West Ocean Township's not interested in doing a joint hearing, come to your hearings, that would be an additional cost expended 100% to the borough if you want urban engineers here for that conditional use hearing. We can make that call later, depending on the complexity of the review and what issues are fleshed out in that process. A decision to make down the road whether you want them here or not. But I think the 20,000 cap is a good way to sort of set a limit on this that we can, you know, to address some of the concerns I heard.
Remind, sorry, remind me of the deadline that we have for, for this, for the master plan, conditional use?
Well, I think that the university, gosh, it's a great question. I think sometime in the fall, I'll send you an email when I get the, I don't have the exact date memorized, but the app, we are far out of the window where we were supposed to have started the conditional use hearing process, but they extended the period for which to review it, because the university wants to do some borough-targeted listening sessions, and they are going to send out advertisements. I gave, I gave their team an address list today that corresponds to the households that would normally be notified under conditional use process, so there's going to be a couple hundred notices going out from the university to come and attend and provide feedback, either asynchronous or at a meeting that they're going to hold, in two, two meetings in September. And that, that has nothing to do with the conditional use hearing process, but they wanted to do that first. And then the conditional use hearing probably will open sometime in October, if I had to guess right now. And you don't have to decide right when you open the hearing. You can continue the hearing for, for logical reasons. You just can't, you can't just kick the can down. You can't keep the hearing open forever and ever and ever. That's a, that's a technique some municipalities have done. You're not allowed to do that. But if there's legitimate reasons that you want to end the hearing and come back with more information, you can continue the hearing to a, to a reasonable later date. But we have to start the process, I believe, by that deadline, which I think is sometime in October. That's a long-winded answer, sorry.
No, it's thorough. I appreciate it. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, my question, Sean, is the cap is at 20,000. If we need to, you know, go over that amount, obviously, we're going to have to come back to counsel and. Sure. And agree for that again. Okay, just want to be, just want to be clear.
Metric, the, has West Ocean committed to the $20,000 cap? Or is that just on our side, or do they have an open-ended agreement?
I know they are similarly interested in capping at that same number, so total spend of 40K to the consultant, but it would be costing us 20.
Any public comment? Questions?
Just a quick question. So the 20,000, is that for just the review? Or does that include them coming back? Are we projecting that the review itself is going to cost perhaps 20, and then the additional, or is that all included?
The proposal is that costs of the review will be shared 50/50, and then any individual attention, let's call it that, attendance, or anything that they have to do to come here in person and provide it, would be billable to the individual municipality. So the sum total of that shared piece, plus whatever individual work you want them to do, would be subject to that cap.
Thank you.
Darrell Cook, South Hornet Street. If I can save the borough any money on the review, I'd suggest we remove the closure of South Church Street from review until the university can supply information on where they're going to turn the buses around shortly before one of the last requests for closing of South Church Street gated for emergency vehicles. But within a year prior to that, they had made a request to the borough for an additional handicap space in the 700 block of South Church Street, and an additional parking space for a facilities vehicle. So, and they were unable to answer the question at that time of where they would turn the buses around. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment or questions?
I do. And Mr. Cook brought up an interesting point at our last topic regarding a table tax. We actually did discuss something along those lines in the Smart Growth Committee a couple of years ago. I don't know if Mr. O'Brien remembers that, but we did discuss like what percentage or square footage that restaurants would use in Gay Street, and potentially how they should be charged moving forward, but nothing really came about that. And maybe we should potentially revisit that. That's actually not a bad idea.
Yeah, the only question I would have, I just don't know what taxing options and legal options. I guess you'd probably want to structure more as like a fee, usage fee.
Correct. I believe that's what would be based on their.
Yeah.
Square footage. Some were going to be much more larger than others, obviously.
Right. And then you just got to, or have to use building and housing and hold them to account to stay in that square footage. So I think there would be an openness to have the discussion. I say that with, as in all things, there are going to be some that are going to be okay with it, and that there are some going to be a pros, but I think there's room to meet in the middle there on that issue.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to go into this agreement with the engineers in West Ocean with a $20,000 cap.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Metric, please call the question.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vicaro is absent. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Ms. Shimoney?
Yes.
And Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We are adjourned at 7:15.